Well, good evening and welcome to our study session of June 21st. It's good to see you all again, council, and we've got a good crowd here in the audience. Welcome. We've come from the exec session, a work session, and then we will be having an exec session after this. So this is a series of several on our agenda tonight. So at this point, calling this meeting to order it, like to ask the clerk to please take the role.
Mayor Hartke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Ellis.
Here.
Councilmember Orlando.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Council, our one service recognition is not able to be here tonight, so our only scheduled public appearance is Dwayne Lidman, who would like to talk to us about Orange Tree Neighborhood Blight. So I'd like to call up Dwayne, and Dwayne, please state your name and address for the record. And you know the green, yellow, red drill. There will be about 30 seconds left of your three-minute time when it turns yellow. So the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you. Dwayne Lidman, 2301 West Palomino Drive, Chandler 85224. Thank you, Mayor Hartke, councilmembers, and acting city manager for this opportunity to speak. I live in an older neighborhood. Is the overhead on you? I live in an older neighborhood that was built in the early 1980s before any members of this diocese moved to Chandler, but I'm certain you have all heard about the Orange Tree Neighborhood. In fact, I've spoken with a few of you about this blight in our neighborhood, and I dropped off an envelope for each of you last week with pictures of these unsightly conditions. The Great Recession of 2008 was when the lack of landscape maintenance problems started to appear in our neighborhood. About five years ago, this issue worsened and seems to be concentrated around our stormwater retention basin on West Bull Moose Drive, south of El Alway. In 2019, 361 of my neighbors signed a petition asking the city to do something about this lack of maintenance in our neighborhood. We did see a slight improvement, but it did not last long. A year later, in 2020, a letter was sent to Neighborhood Resources asking for something to be done about this concern in our neighborhood. We did see a slight improvement, but again, it did not last for long. In fact, in the last four months, it has become a fire hazard. I've spoken with a couple of my neighbors who have repeatedly reached out to code enforcement, but again, we have not seen any lasting improvement in the 22 months since the petition was submitted. Kicking a can down Bull Moose Drive with blinders on will not remove this blight from our city. Bull Moose is one of the main entrances to our neighborhood, and driving on the street is an embarrassment. Blight is often contagious, and we do not want this disorder to spread like a virus in our neighborhood. In this public forum, we are again asking our city leaders for your help to improve the appearance of our older traditional neighborhood by fully enforcing Chapter 30 Neighborhood Preservation Code and to act on the agreement that was signed by Mayor Maxwell in August of 1979, when our subdivision was approved. I've been told things move slowly with the city, so I'm curious if 30 to 60 days is a reasonable timeframe to see conditions improve. Thank you for your consideration of this request.
Thank you, Mr. Lidman. I know many of us have gone by and viewed that. I know that we have received and looked at the package that you sent them. I do know that there is an open code case for this, and as you know, we're also examining other options for that property, and those will continue to be worked on. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Council. Councilmember Orlando.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And, Mr. Lidman, we appreciate you coming to our council meetings over the last year, year or so and a half on this issue. But after we talked last week, I know the city manager and I spoke, and I know you had an action plan put together. Have you relayed that to Mr. Lidman and the neighborhoods?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Orlando, yes. Staff was in contact with Mr. Lidman last week to let him know about the open code enforcement case and the timeline associated with that.
Excellent. Is that going to be just a follow-up, make sure we're understanding here? We don't want the impression we're moving slowly here, right? So what is the... He gave us 60 days, but I'm sure we'll do better than that.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I know you are.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, we are in frequent contact with Mr. Lidman, and we will continue to openly communicate about this issue.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lidman. All right, council. Next, we have our consent agenda. There have been a number of items that have been called in, and we'll start from the top, which is item number three, request by Councilmember Orlando, questions on process and public hearing schedule. And who is that directed towards, sir? Is that?
Whomever, staff, whoever. Oh, city manager, I'll start with him.
City manager.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Councilmember Orlando, I'd like to ask Ryan Peters, our government relations policy manager, to come forward and answer your questions tonight on this item.
All right, thank you, city manager, mayor, council, councilmember Orlando. I'm going to pop up a quick slide to address this question directly. It kind of talks about the next step, should the council approve this item on Thursday night. So the council will, or I'm sorry, SRP will effectively start their public involvement process as soon as that action is taken. There's plans to be at notice to the community through a press release, and then through the months of August, July and August, we'll move with the public involvement process that'll include noticing of neighbors and affected residents through these various corridors. And I believe in the middle of July, the project website, which is listed down there, will give an option for a virtual open house. And then ultimately, in August, SRP will submit the application with the corporation commission, and then there's a specific line sighting process that will take place throughout the fall that involves extensive public testimony and the case being made. And then ultimately, a decision will be made with the corporation commission by the early part of next year with the project construction goal of delivering power by third quarter of 2023.
Okay. So, Mayor, just to clarify, so there are neighbors that will be affected. Is that a normal process that they're going to get some kind of a mailer or door hanger or something, so they're a notification? How's that go? How does that work?
Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, that is correct. There'll be extensive notification of that neighborhood, all the neighborhoods that'll be impacted, door hangers, there'll be social media, and ultimately, that media relations campaign will be led by SRP.
Excellent. And then, just a call to squash a rumor, there will be substantial undergrounding of these, at least the proposed plan, substantial undergrounding of these wires, of this activity, the cabling wire. So I know I refilled it one call today late this afternoon when this came out. So again, just to let the public understand that this is available to review, the entire process is open, and we're looking for communication. And I also want to say this was a very smooth process between the entities and was very timely, and I commend staff as well as SRP, Intel, and any other entities that were involved in getting this to the, a pretty good solution set here.
Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, it has been a really great process to work with the team, and I think we got a really good result, to your point. It's going to underground nearly three miles, 2.65 miles of this entire project will be underground, so as not to give additional overhead utilities in areas that don't currently have them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I actually want to just give a thank you to SRP. I know the, I see Jason Barrett in the back, and I know we had, it seemed, I don't know how many conversations we had the previous time in which the process was extended through the line sighting committee and other things, but this has been a very good process this year. And I really want to thank SRP for really streamlining this, working with us. I know your staff, I know our staff has put a lot of work in this. I want to thank Ryan, I want to thank John Knutson, I want to thank Kelly Schwab and her department for working with the people. Zach, I see in the audience, and others have put in a lot of hours on year end to make this happen. So thank you to all parties. This is really, it's been a really, I'll leave you use the word, kind of fun process, if that can happen in this case. So.
Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, if I may also reject that, yeah, this is, this is a great example of when we know something that is coming that is going to benefit our community, not just a partner of Intel that is a major employer in our city, but all the background, the infrastructures we need to provide, other utilities along with SRP to help support them, their future expansions. But when we open up the dialogue early and are transparent, this is exactly how governments should work with public and private together, hand in hand, to make sure that we're doing the best for our community, not just for those that are being employed, but those that are living in the neighborhoods that get affected. So I do want to say again, thank you out to both Intel and SRP and all our staff. I mean, this is everyone being involved in Team Chandler to make sure that we're doing the best for our community, but that also makes sure also the public out there understands it's not necessarily 100% done deal, that there is still time for public input. They still get to see what's going to be coming forward so that we can make sure that they are heard also. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any additional comments? Thank you. All right. Next item called in is item number eight, also by Councilmember Orlando, questions on the economic impact and opportunities of a corporate park coming into our town. Councilmember Orlando.
City manager, I know we talked about this last week as well, and you said you're amped and prepared, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Orlando. I think based on the nature of the questions, the applicant is probably the best to answer your questions. So Brennan Ray is here representing the applicant on this case.
Yeah, and, well, I guess I do have some questions for staff. Okay, so who's from staff can answer that question, economic development impact?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, Micah Miranda, who's our economic development director, can answer your questions as well.
Sorry, Mr. Ray. You were ready.
Mr. Ray will not be upset if he doesn't.
I agree. I agree.
Yeah, put a little plaque up here for.
So, I know you've been working, and our staff's been working diligently, and the applicant and the neighborhoods have been really a great outreach program here, and I appreciate all everyone's done for this. There are a couple of sticking points that we just want to confirm. We took out the cross docks, which I know is not your area, but you did take out the cross docks. And the question keeps coming up, or has come up in the past, is why aren't these buildings something, just an extension of more distribution center? And you had, we had chat about this. Number two, there was an economic development plan that the applicant presented to the city, and we have a chance to look at that, and your thoughts on that. Concur, don't concur, or have some other thoughts on that as well?
So through the mayor, Councilmember Orlando, on your first question related to the economics of the project, due to the input on staff and the subsequent changes made by the developer to the building orientation, we talked about the cross docks being removed as well as the increased aesthetics of the building, it begins to price out a number of those more traditional warehouse distribution projects that don't align with our economic development strategy. So from the economics perspective, we're bumping up against those costs being a factor in pushing that, those general types of projects from the proposed case before you tonight. And the second question around the economic impacts of the project, we had the chance to review the report prepared, and it was very consistent with what we would have found. They did a number of blending models, taken into assumptions based upon who could occupy the building. You know, you all know my saying, product wins projects. We're short on industrial space in the airpark area. This brings that new product to the market. And the modeling that they provided, I could say was kind of conservative. They looked at one of the leading things that drives our revenues is around residents and how many of these residents will live in Chandler. So their models were very conservative, which we were glad to see a lot of times, we see that overstated in reports, but the economics, very consistent with what we would see, and using the blended approach, staff is very satisfied and in agreement with what the applicant has proposed.
And the applicant did another due diligence, at least in my mind and some of the residents' mind, in articulating some of the companies, actual companies, not just the markets or an area of concern. Do you kind of agree with that? Are those areas, those 12 or 14 companies potentially, have they actually reached out to the city or reaching out to the city and saying, hey, we're looking for a place to stay?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Orlando, the companies that they provided as active in the market are true and accurate. It's companies that we've had contact with, several of them. Some of them we have not at this time, but they are generally consistent with the reshoring of manufacturing that we're seeing across the state.
Excellent. And the final question here, I had another one, but if I don't think of it, it's okay, it's not an important one. The, I know I wanted to get what's, we had originally talked about the timing of this, and I could probably ask either staff or Brennan Ray on that one, as when the timing is good. That came up as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for that. I appreciate you validating the economics impact. That's an important issue here, that the residents feel comfortable. And the one couple I spoke with today feel more comfortable having the city say, yeah, we did look at this, and yet we agree that this is happening. Not that we don't trust Mr. Ray, but we just want to make sure our residents feel like there has been a look at this thing from a city representative. We appreciate you taking the time to look at that. Happy to do so.
Any additional comments or questions for Micah Miranda? Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. Micah, for the residents of Chandler to really be appeased moving forward with this project, can you talk a little bit about the company who wants to do this project, who they are, and where they've been, and what they have done in the past to kind of reassure the resident that this is a company that's really put them out where their roots are? They just really truly, it's all about what they do?
Councilmember, that might be a better question for Brennan Ray, who's representing the company.
Okay. Well, I mean, the reason why I asked Micah is because Micah sent an email today saying that he, based on staff and all the information that he has done, the research and everything, this company, we come in in the company as a whole to build this project. Yeah, that's the reason why I asked him.
Good. Through the mayor, Councilmember Ellis, Core Five is a very experienced developer. They have several million square feet under development and existing throughout the country. So their expertise in bringing these types of projects to fruition, we have confidence in the staff, their support staff around them, their brokerage team, JLL, we do a ton of work with, so very familiar. JLL knows what we're looking for in terms of our economic development strategy, which has been outlined by mayor and council. So we're confident in their ability to perform and don't really have any concerns on that front, councilmembers.
Thank you so much, Micah. Thank you, Mayor, for all.
Of course. Wait, I'm sorry, I wanted to get Mr. Ray, but go ahead.
Yeah, so, thank you, Micah. Mr. Ray.
Good evening, mayors, members of the council. Brennan Ray, 1850 North Central, here on behalf of the applicant, Core Five. I'm not sure if there was a question that I needed to answer.
Yeah, just a question I'm going to ask you right now, you bet. So that's good. The commercial retail corner, can you please reiterate what you've done to that to give us confidence that that has a blueprint to be, or footprint to be able to be developed?
Sure, wonderful. Mayor, Councilman Orlando, and anyone who's watching, as is sometimes the case with development, we have out parcels. And working closely with the planning department folks, we've tried to design our site in such a way that that future commercial corner will have viability. Importantly, the things that we have done is created internal vehicular and pedestrian circulation to that site. So if you were to look at the site plan, coming off of McQueen Road, there is an access point through our development for vehicles. We have provided pedestrian connections to that point. Same thing with Queen Creek Road, there is a vehicular and pedestrian access point as well, internal to our site to be able to connect to that. Additionally, as part of Phase One of our improvements, we will come along and improve the arterial street frontage along that commercial corner as well.
And these are all stipulations in our, I'm looking over at Mr. Horn, these are all stipulations in that, in our agreement with them, right? And he looks over to the staff, staff says, yes, they nod, because you guys can't see that in the audience, so we got a nod here. I'm doing a play-by-play over here.
I like it. I like it.
Okay, and you know, we had this conversation before. Sometimes we develop an area and we leave it, we leave it empty, but, and we've had a few of those this year, as you know, we had to go back and do something different to it. So I feel comfortable knowing your reputation, knowing the company, we'll get that corner developed in a retail, or a good fashion. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Finally, Mayor, I want to thank staff for working on this project. They took his, and I know they ran Mr. Ray through the ringer and his applicant, but they took a project, I think, and they made it really, really better, and a much stellar project. I think you'll enjoy it. And I think the residents will be proud of this one, and of course, the long-term ramifications of this, I think, is great. So thank you for all the work you've done. And he's nodding in his head right now, so we're good to go. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I also want to thank Core. You guys have, I know when you first approached us with this a couple of years ago, you know, there's been a lot of changes with this and a lot of renditions, and, you know, at different times, we were wondering if this was going to happen, just based on what you said you needed and, you know, working with us, but I think this has come together well. So thank you, Brennan, and thank your developers for bringing this to our community. Additional comments or questions? Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much, and great presentation. I appreciate that. And this is a textbook example of how to work with the neighborhood and include the neighborhood as well as economic development, as well as council. And Brennan, I want to thank you and Core Five for the project. I think it's a good fit for the community near the airport and within the airport area plan. But the inclusion of the neighbors in the discussion and the constant outreach was next to perfect. So I'm grateful for that. I think the rest of council and mayor are as well. Just one question, are there going to be EV stations on this particular site? I'm just kidding, I already know the answer to that. Thank you. Thank you for including those. We appreciate it.
Yeah, all right. Next item called in, item number 13, Councilmember Ellis called for a brief presentation, as did Councilmember Orlando. Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. City manager, please.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Ellis, I'd like to have our fire chief, Tom Dugan, see can speak about both items 13 and 14 for you this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Items number 13 and 14 are both resolutions that authorize the city of Chandler to enter into an agreement with Dignity Health. Both of these agreements directly support our paramedic and our EMT programs. Specifically, item number 13 establishes administrative medical direction, which is actually required by the Arizona Department of Health Services for any certified paramedic. We have to have a physician that we actually report to. The benefit for medical direction for us is that it provides our crews with access to ER physicians when they're actually on scene at a call in someone's house, and they are looking for guidance. We have state-of-the-art equipment right now, where we can do 12 lead EKGs in your house. We can check your blood glucose, your entital CO2, can get all of your vitals, and we can actually upload that, send it to the hospital real time as we're talking to the physicians, and then they can give us the direction we need as far as treatment protocols. Item 13 is a three-year agreement, and it is going to commence on July 1st if it is passed. Item number 14 authorizes the staff from Dignity Health to certify many of our Chandler paramedics in neonatal resuscitation. Neonatal patients are categorized as patients that are from newborn to 28 days old. These incidents are, can be extremely challenging, and that's primarily due to the fact that the anatomy of that infant, how small they are, it's very difficult to get IV access, pharmacology, electrophysiology, all of it changes when you deal with a smaller patient. This training will provide our paramedics with the practical skills and the most up-to-date protocols that we need to successfully resuscitate neonatal patients. The term of this agreement is one year, and this training right now, we have it scheduled if it is passed, and it should be completed by September of this year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on either item.
Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I thank you, Chief. I mean, every time I see these, you know I'm going to pull them because I'm so excited about the fact that we are providing this kind of level of service. I'm very familiar with having a medical doctor at Quebec and call, which is medical director, to be able to receive that information ahead of time. I don't know how much to thank you for putting something like that into place as far as your process is concerned, because the lives are being saved by the second when we do that. And the neonatal part, my goodness, I've worked Peds before, and I know how important timing is. timing is when it comes to small children like that. And another thing that I want to thank you about is that when I did the tour of the training center over there, and I saw the room where all this training is done, you know, I'm passionate about higher education, CEUs, those things are really important to our paramedics and EMTs so that they be on top of their game at all times, so that lives can continually be in safe. Thank you so much for doing that. And Chandler, I mean, they know that you're providing what they need right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
So had called the city, any additional comments, questions?
I can't top what you just said, so.
Counsel, any additions? All right. Thank you, Chief. Our last item that was called in tonight, item number eighteen, by Vice Mayor Stewart, question.
Thank you. So we talked a little bit about, we're seeing a pretty good kick up in our insurance rate. Can you give us, I'm going to ask the city attorney, can you give us a little background on that and why, and how much it is, and why that number's going up so significantly?
Absolutely, if I may, Mayor, Vice Mayor Stewart. We have seen a dramatic increase in our public liability premiums as well as our cyber protection premiums, and there's a couple reasons, and it flipped overnight. In fact, when we started this process and I came to the council for an increase in premiums, we thought it was going to be relatively small, and we've seen it quadruple. And the biggest reason is the civil unrest and the social inflation, what they call the social inflation, the settlements relating to police conduct and the riots and the damage being caused, that we're not necessarily experiencing in Chandler. We have a really good loss ratio in Chandler, but the rest of the country, there's other parts of the country that are experiencing this, and it is impacting the market dramatically to the point that the first layer of excess coverage, just a reminder of the council, we are self-insured, self-funded for the first one-point-seven-five million, and that is probably not going to change. We thought we were going to have to bump it up, but it's probably going to stay at one-point-seven-five million. And then we have excess coverage after that. In our first layer of excess coverage that we had through our insurance carrier last year, that insurance carrier is no longer able to ride excess coverage. Their reinsurer pulled out because of the losses they have suffered. And so we are now, the market has dramatically increased. We are facing overall a hundred and ninety-one percent increase, and we're actually doing really good because many public entities are facing up to three-hundred-and-fifty percent increase. We are still working with our broker. We have not purchased our excess coverage yet. We have estimates, and we're still working to get that down as low as possible, but it is, the market's been dramatically impacted by what we've seen going on and around the country.
Thank you, Kelly. And so your recommendation is, is based on what your knowledge, that this is something that we should approve on Thursday?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Stewart, it is. Most of our claims, and through my tenure, we kept them under our self-insured retention max, but there's always opportunities for a big claim, and we do a per occurrence. So if something relates back to an incident that occurs this year, even though we don't know about it for five years, we'll have coverage for it five years based on what we purchased this year.
Thank you.
Any additional comments on this? All right. Counsel, that's all that's been called in. On Thursday, we'll be voting on these as a group, as well as we have one action item that I had requested, which is a discussion and direction to city manager related to, we have tasked our city attorney to draft a resolution, a non-discrimination resolution. This will be a presentation of that that's available in our packet. That was number one, so that's available to be seen. Number two, to introduce the fact that we're going to be doing a deep dive, look at diversity, equity, and inclusion, contracting a group to do a study across our city to bring that to our community, that this will be, now that the new year will be starting in July, that money will be available. And then number three, my intention was then to defer the vote on this to, after, to fold it into part of the study, so that there will be copious opportunities for more public input and public dialogue around the process. So that's the intention of that, and we'll have whatever discussion you would like to and direction to the city manager at that time. So with that, counsel, I'd like to close our study session. We do have a second part exec session, which we'll resume in a couple minutes. Thank you. Councilmember.
Yes, I wanted to make sure that I just, in terms of what you, your comments that you just made about the, what we're going to do in terms of the discussion moving forward.
Again, we will be having this discussion on Thursday. That's part of the, I was just introducing what we're going to do.
I know, and I just wanted to make sure that I just shared on the record that, you know, although we will be discussing it, I wanted to make sure that I'm sharing that I'm in support of ordinance. I just wanted to put that on the record as we discuss moving forward, okay?
Thank you, and that will be part of the record as part of our conversation on Thursday. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.